I'll order the City of Columbiana City Council meeting on this August twentieth, twenty twenty four. We're gonna have an invocation by Dan in a minute, and then after that, we'll all rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight, and we know you're always with us. We pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give our council members the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great care of the Pledge of Allegiance so loud. I thought that was great.
At this time, I would like to ask Dan to call the roll.
Yengus?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes of that city council meeting. I'd like to ask if there are any corrections or changes to that. There are none, they'll be accepted as submitted. We're moving to reading of communications. I'm gonna make an adjustment to the to our agenda, and I'm going to see if we could entertain the fact that I would look for a motion to concur with City Manager Lance Willard and Chief of Police William Myers to appoint Hunter Daly and Matthew De Niro into the auxiliary police force.
I'll move second.
Motion is second. Dan, you call the roll.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
We received a letter from Marty Knowles requesting permission. Oh, I'm sorry. I ran too fast. We're gonna have the swearing in right now. I apologize. Gentlemen, shall I come forward?
I ask you to state your name once I start this, and raise your right hand here. I state your name.
Hi, Matthew De Niro.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As an auxiliary officer.
As an auxiliary officer.
Which I've been appointed.
Which I've been appointed.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, Hunter Daly.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Charter and Ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
Charter and Ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
An auxiliary police officer.
As an auxiliary police officer.
Which I've been appointed.
Which I've been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen. I would note that in our reading of communications, we received a letter from Marty Knowles request requesting permission to reschedule the North Elm Street Block Party event, which was previously approved by City Council at the June eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting to September fifteenth, twenty twenty four, due to the weather forecast. Everything will remain the same for the event as previously approved. We will deal with that matter later in our agenda. We also received a letter of interest for the open seat on the Park Recreation Cemetery Board for the unexpired term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty six, submitted by Terry Shaker. We will also act on that item at a later time. Next, I'd like to read, "We received a letter from John Masternick from Windsor House regarding the Columbiana Stadium Project", sent to Lance Willard, our city manager. "I saw you on the news promoting the new stadium at Columbiana, and I would like to make a donation on behalf of the Windsor House, Inc., at the business friend level. In close, please find a check made to the Columbiana Athletic Boosters for one thousand dollars on behalf of Windsor House Incorporated, submitted by John Masternick, President of Windsor House." I think that's great, and we do have that check, and wanna receive the check, Sean?
There we go.
Very good. That was the great news article on in on Channel twenty one. We appreciate Lance discussing the stadium project and what's being done out there at the park. We're now gonna move to reports of commissions and boards. We received a copy of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of August thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions or comments regarding those minutes? We also received a copy of the Park Recreation and Cemetery Board meeting minutes of July twenty second, twenty twenty four. Any questions or comments on those minutes? They'll both be accepted as submitted. Does anybody else wanna come in? We have a couple seats up here if anybody wants to come in. Hey, we're moving to recognition of persons desiring to appear. First, we have Sean Zentner to discuss the stadium project. Sean?
I have a statement, and then, you know, I'll take any questions we may have. My name is Sean Zentner. While many of you already know me, I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself more formally. I was born and raised here in Columbiana. The city holds a very special place to me. My brother, my sisters, and my children all grew up and graduated from Columbiana schools. I'm a proud supporter of the city and the school district. I'm currently serving as President of the Columbiana Athletic Boosters. Although we are closely affiliated with the school system, it is important to note that we do not work for or officially represent the school system. We embarked on this stadium project. My vision was for it to be a collaborative effort involving key stakeholders like Pat Tingle, the boosters, Columbiana schools, and the City of Columbiana. I wanted us all to be a team. The spirit of the the spirit of teamwork is what I've always believed in and what I'd hoped to foster throughout this project. The idea of the stadium project was first brought up about three years ago. At that time, I discussed with Lance Willard about trying to secure some grants to help the significant undertaking. Lance informed me there were none available at the time, but he would keep looking, but unfortunately, none have ever been materialized. Eight months ago, Pat Tingle and I came and approached the same city council, maybe a couple new members, but and council seemed very supportive and instructed us to work with Lance, the city manager. Since then, I've made numerous efforts to try to collaborate with the city for support and assistance. Unfortunately, not only did the city fail to provide necessary help, but they also became an obstacle in the progress of this project. Despite their insurances of potential assistance, the lack of concrete actions and general commitment has cost us countless precious hours. The situation the situation has been incredibly frustrating, especially considering the amount of effort and enthusiasm the Stadium Committee and our community have invested in this project. We hope for a united effort to enhance our community's facilities and provide a better environment for our students and our athletes. Then Lance went on Channel twenty one news and stated the stadium was deteriorating, which was true. But then he said it's been over twenty years since we have done any major work with it. By Lance's statement, it inferred that the city somehow assisted in this project. They have not. In conclusion, I urge the city to reconsider their stance and actively participate in making this project and future projects come to reality. I hope we can work as a team, guys. That's what I want. That's all I have to say. Anyone have questions for me? Do you guys remember telling that you guys were all behind this? Do we remember that? And I think it was November?
I very much remember that conversation. I know one part of that conversation was that it was gonna be very difficult for us to have any financial involvement in the project, simply because it's tax money and we're not just allowed to spend tax money unless unless it's properly budgeted, properly authorized, and I'm Mark, if I say something wrong, please correct me as I as I go through this process. I don't wanna say something incorrect. But then we we did want to help in any way we could, and I know Lance has been working with you on any kind of in-kind work that we could do. Any kind of, I know we did a value engineering project for you guys on the on the track.
We changed what we were doing, or what we were doing, that we were trying to get it ready for pavement, and we altered it because of the sewer line. We all know that.
Well, yeah, but I was under the impression that paving wasn't really even in phase one of the project.
Well, we were, RT Vernal said they were gonna help us, so we were gonna try to get it into phase one.
Did you change that?
Excuse me?
When did you change that?
Ah, I don't know. Two, two and a half months ago when we were trying to get, you know, and then that's when the
Sorry, Dan.
No, you're fine. It's it's more of an open discussion. I just wanted to and then also, I know that the sewer line has come up a lot, and my understanding was that that was discussed fairly early on in the project, and that was agreed that that wasn't gonna be addressed right up front because it would delay, would risk delaying the project.
That was probably three months ago, yes.
Okay, so
Not up front.
Well, okay, so it was discussed three months ago, and you agreed it was it was agreed.
The timing of it would have been, we would have had to been right on, and I agree with that.
Okay.
But there are other things that could be done, and I've tried. I've reached out. I have.
I mean
So I'm just looking for council and the city to, again, be team player with with what we're doing down there, and I don't think it's happened.
I I think we wanna be a team player, but the one thing we can't do is write a check. So, I mean, if if there's something, you know, assisting with the paving, I know we talked about that. If there's something that we can do that's an in-kind type of donation, I think that we will do anything that we can do. But when it when it comes down to actually cutting a check for a hundred thousand dollars for
I never expected that.
Well, not you specifically, but that there was a, in that November meeting, there was a request for a hundred fifty thousand dollar check. Right, so
I'll take one.
Right, I understand. I'm just, and and Sean, you know, you are as much Mr. Columbiana as anyone I know, and I hate that you're stuck in the middle of this whole project.
Me too.
But do you know that we, you know, we talked to Lance about this often, and it really is important to us that we help if we can. It's just we have to, we have to find ways where we can help.
If you think about it, in the middle of Columbiana, there's a park. In the middle of that park, there's a football field, and that's the way Harvey Firestone wanted it. And again, I just hope that we could have got along better in phase one, and I hope we can do more in the upcoming phases. I mean, it's literally right there, guys, and the city still owns it, so I think that's a cop op.
But here's the thing, because as I recall, when when this whole stadium thing came up, one of the reasons that we leased it technically over to the school was to eliminate some of the the ownership problems that were, the school couldn't spend money on it because they didn't own it. We couldn't spend money on it because it it didn't fit a, you know, that greater good definition, and again, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong on this. So we we ended up in this middle ground where nobody could really do anything. No one could raise the funds. No one could spend the money. And so by deeding this the stadium over to the school, we eliminated that ownership problem. I mean, at no time was there ever any conversation about a financial, you know, involvement, other than in-kind, in-kind assistance where we could, you know, any any way that we can help, we will, but again, we're limited in what we can do to what we have available to.
When would we think that the sewer line that we know has been bad for, what, ten years now? When would we see that coming up on the books?
So I I don't know that we can predict that, but I do know this. If you guys paved the the track as you plan to do at some point, and then we have to go back in later and repair the sewer line, then we have to fix all of that anyway.
The city paved the track for us. I mean, they have a paving.
I don't, I mean
I'm looking for
Material, and we agreed to put it down, right?
Yeah, exactly.
We agreed to put the pavement down. You buy the material.
We we might be able to work on something like, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for us to reach across the aisle and figure out how we can get, make things happen.
Well, if you recall, we did a value engineering on your limestone for the track, and we came up with a plan, and at the school board meeting last week, you've already put down the limestone, and that was a big chunk of money that you put down. And, you know, we gave you an opportunity to to choose something a lot less.
Are we talking about the grindings?
Yeah.
We couldn't put grindings in there, Skip. It would have taken and tracked up into the the stands that were worth, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Let me jump in. I think there were two separate conversations. One was the grindings, right, which which you you rejected that, which is fine.
Correct.
And then the other was the hundred and five thousand, the gravel project?
Yeah.
That limestone, that we, you know, Lance and and our engineer came in and looked at and said, you can do this instead, which would
Again, we were preparing, the the bigger number was for preparing for pavement, so yes. And then we did go with your recommendations there. We did do that.
So, I mean, that was a, that was a seventy-five thousand dollar savings.
Well, but at some point, you're still gonna have to spend this. That was what we were trying to do, get it ready for paving, so everyone knows.
Okay, that's fair. But I I mean, like I said, we're committed to helping any way we can. It's just, we can't write a check.
I understand that.
So Scott, can you? Yeah.
I'm just curious, does the lease preclude you from participating in the
I'm not gonna have, I'm gonna step in at this point, Mr. Karen. And by the way, for the record, my name is Mark Hudson, and if we wanna talk about graduates of Columbiana, I'll go back with my grandparents.
I know that.
My children, my mother, you know, so obviously, I know a lot about this community. I love this community just like everybody else here. My family probably goes back further than just about everybody else here.
I agree with that.
However, when we start talking about legalities, you're in what I do for a living. When we start talking about the ground lease, Scott, I was on the school board at the time, and I was also the municipal attorney. So if we wanna start talking about the purpose of the ground lease, why there is a ground lease, part of that was so that the district or whoever would be able to raise funds. The problem with the football field in the park, everybody loves it. It's one of the only ones left in the state of Ohio. We all know that. But over the years, this predates me even, it has been a thorn in the side of the then Village of Columbiana and now the City of Columbiana and the Columbiana School District. Why? Because when it came time to maintaining it, everybody wanted to say, well, it's really not mine. It's you're using it, or you own it. So it has been something that's been a problem for collaboration. However, the idea of the ground lease was to simplify the relationship for the next fifty years. Did it necessarily mean that there would be a project right away? I don't know if anybody knew that at the time. Did it mean that there would be a community project? Nobody knew exactly what was going to happen. Part of the idea was the school district might be able to go after grant funding, or maybe the city would be able to help, but it would be an easier situation than it had been because the only way for the city to do anything with the stadium was to pass a bond levy, which the city did almost thirty years ago. So if you look at the idea, the idea of the ground lease, no, it did not prevent anyone from doing anything, but the purpose behind it was to allow a project like this or renovating the baseball stadium to happen without the city having to go to the taxpayers and saying, put up a bond issue, support a bond issue so we can fix the football stadium, which, by the way, is used primarily by the school district. You know, taxpayer dollars are something that we have to be careful how we spend. We can't just write a check to any organization because we think it's a great idea. Everybody up here can think that this project is wonderful. I, for one, certainly do, but we can't write a check. We basically represent taxpayers, and we have to be stewards of their money. It's not our money. So writing a check, we can't do. Supporting the project in other ways, we can do. We have. And at this point, I would like to read a statement on behalf of the city if anybody wants to listen to it. And part of it is the background of where we were and where we are today. So, on December thirty first, twenty twenty, the City of Columbiana, the Columbiana Exempted Village School District entered into a fifty-year ground lease agreement as requested by the district and the Columbiana Athletic Boosters. The fifty-year ground lease consists of granting the football, baseball, softball fields, softball stadium to the school for a round agreement of one dollar per year. The ground lease was sought with the idea of the school being able to control the facilities and allow more opportunities, as I just mentioned, to obtain grants and other funding for renovations that weren't available to the city, when the only thing the city could do was put up a bond levy. In fall twenty twenty three, the city met with the Columbiana Athletic Boosters to discuss their plans for the stadium restoration project. The committee mentioned paving part of the old track to make a walking trail around the field. The committee suggested paving from the home side stands around to the front entrance of the stadium to entrance of the visitor's side stands. The city mentioned an aging public sewer in the area that runs east-west in front of the bleachers. At that meeting, the contractor said it would not be a problem to replace the line. Spring of twenty twenty four, the boosters met with the city again and asked if the city could pay to replace the sewer line. City Manager Lance Willard said it wasn't in the budget for twenty twenty four and that the city needed an estimate for the repair. Contractor estimated it would cost one hundred twenty thousand dollars to replace the sewer line. The city certainly hadn't budgeted that for capital expenditures for twenty twenty four. It was collectively agreed upon in the spring by those involved, including the architect, the engineers, city representatives, and Athletic Boosters. Because of cost and time, such a project would add to the stadium restoration project, which, Sean, I think is what you just said. The focus would be placed instead on completing the bleachers and address the track service surface with stone in time for the twenty twenty four football schedule. To the city's knowledge, that goal is being met. After the season, the sewer line project can be reassessed. The sewer line is a city line. The city is certainly responsible for that line. However, that line isn't the only line in the city, and it's certainly not the only line in a stage of critical repair for the city. In fact, there are many other sewer lines, more critical in nature, that unfortunately take priority on the city's schedule of replacement. The sewer line at the stadium doesn't have the usage threshold in comparison to other lines. There aren't that many users of that line. The city offered to look for possible grant opportunities, but have not found any, as you said, that are applicable at this point. The city informed the boosters that there aren't immediate plans to replace that line, and that if it does collapse, if it does, the city will fix any breaks, as we do with any other sewer line. If the boosters do choose to pave over the line, then the city would have to patch it and repair the blacktop as necessary if and when the line collapses. In the meantime, the city did offer free blacktop grinding, which we already discussed, but that donation was turned down. We understand why. City recently met with the Stadium Restoration Committee and the boosters, and the boosters asked the city to pay for stone to be put down to make a nicer surface for the upcoming season. And they would revisit the idea of paving the walking trail next year. Is that correct?
It's all correct.
Okay. The original contractor's estimate was one hundred five thousand dollars for the stone. To assist in the project, the city paid two thousand thirty-five dollars for a value engineering exercise, which resulted in a new estimate of twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars, down from one hundred five thousand for the stone.
Apples and oranges, though. We just want to hear that.
In any event, to assist, the city applied also for a community foundation grant. With the original support of the boosters, you supported that for twenty-four eight hundred, which meant if we were looking at twenty-six one, we only had another thirteen hundred dollars in difference to get the walking trail ready for the upcoming season. Unfortunately, that grant was not successful. Now, at the conclusion of the most recent Stadium Restoration Committee meeting, the president requested to speak at the August twentieth meeting. You're here this evening. Since the meeting, there seems to have been some misinformation about the city that has been shared in both print and radio in an effort to negatively sway the public opinion, public opinion of the community and In an effort to negatively sway the public opinion, public opinion of the community and city officials. There's no reason for that when we're trying to work together. It has been proclaimed by the boosters that the school, community members and businesses have all donated to the project. And a lot of businesses have and a lot of individuals have and Sean.
You have.
You can take credit for a lot of those donations. I know how tenacious you are. As everyone in the one dollar ground lease donated land and existing facilities. The city is willing to help. We did the ground lease to make this project possible. Had we not done that ground lease, we'd be sitting where we have for the last umpteen years. We did a fix the field project a few years ago, thank goodness, because the field. When some people I know played on it was in even worse condition. This ground lease doesn't solve every problem. But it certainly has made this project possible. Without it, I don't think it would have been possible. So the city has not stood back and done nothing. And we do take exception to being told we haven't done a thing.
I'm, I'm.
We are willing, the city is willing to work with you and I think that we have tried to work with you. But the idea that the city again can write a check. Their legal counsel would say, no.
That would be you.
What, so my, my question with that, Mark, is since you're legal counsel, is, does the city own the park?
The city owns the park, but the effect of the ground lease effectively transferred control of the stadium. The baseball stadium, the football stadium, softball stadium, the original one and the softball field to the school. In return for a payment of one dollar a year for the next fifty years. Now, the thought process on fifty years was what is the useful economic life?
Right.
Facilities if they're built anytime soon, fifty years. So in fifty years, who will own the stadium? You and I don't know.
Who knows?
Could a new lease be negotiated at that point in time? Certainly.
Sure.
And will that be something that happens? I don't think anybody in this room can.
So that's a ground lease then, right?
It is a ground.
So it, so it, you're telling me the city has precluded from participating in any type of monetary dollar amount. Towards the stadium or towards the surrounding park itself, which the city participates in, correct?
Here's the problem. The booster club is running the project. The city governmental entities can work with other governmental entities. But when it comes to a private organization, that's a little bit more problematic. Then we start having to look at proper use of taxpayer dollars.
Uh, and I, I completely understand that. And I'm not speaking for the school board. I'm speaking from being with the uh.
I understand.
The stadium committee. So, so why wouldn't the city then just participate in it? And forward some type of donation towards the school, which can forward it to the boosters, which would not preclude the city from doing this?
Well.
Because.
If you're a taxpayer in the city of Columbia, all right? You and I are assuming that every taxpayer in the city of Columbia is in favor of.
Oh, I'm not assuming that at all. I'm not assuming that at all.
All right.
Not at all.
If there are taxpayers that are not in favor of that, can this city council? As stewards of public money, use funds to support directly the project. Which means give it to the school who gives it to the booster club. There's not much different than if we write a check to the booster club.
But it's legal to do it the other way. And it is.
Questionable.
Oh, I already took, I already looked at it. It is legal to do it that way.
It's questionable.
So, so the city could participate if they wanted to in the project. And listen, I understand that the city has operational costs and things like that. Monies get spent here or there. It's hard to run a city and plus you have to be good stewards of the money that are collected within the city itself. But certainly the park itself is a responsibility of the city. Do we not agree to that?
The park itself is, but the ground lease made an exception for these facilities.
But it doesn't preclude, as I read it and had our attorney look at it, it doesn't preclude this from happening. Uh, if it was got, going the other way towards the school and you were.
As one of the attorneys that was involved in negotiating it, the purpose of it was to basically allow the district and grants.
That was it.
And get away from, it would have to be a bond levy. And also get away from, and you know this as a school board member, the constant. Okay, whose responsibility is it? We need to fix the field. We need to fix.
Oh, it was just neglected on both because nobody knew what to do with it.
And it's been that way as long as I can remember.
Oh, yeah. There's no question about it.
So this ground lease, and we can disagree over what the city can and cannot do. I'm gonna take a conservative position on that. If this council chooses to make in kind donations. I don't really see a problem with that. Writing checks, I do. So I'll disagree with your legal counsel on that.
And you've, you've looked at the ORC on that and the state statutes on it. And they specifically state that they can't use these particular funds in order to assess.
What I'm going to say is we are using taxpayer dollars. If I liked a project or somebody up here likes a project and says, hey, let's use taxpayer dollars for that. But it turns out there's fifty people that don't think it's a good idea. Should I have done that?
No, excuse me. I, I think we're, we're kind of, I think we're kind of. Yeah.
Absolutely. No, I, I get it. And we appreciate your time.
I want to, everyone, go down and see that stadium.
I've, I've walked by. It's beautiful.
I want you to come August thirtieth. We'll have our dedication that day. And I want us to work as a team going forward. So, thank you for listening.
Sean, Sean, thank you. Thank you for your work. We really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is Jacob Sevek from the American Legion to discuss the twenty twenty four street fair.
Well, I plan on taking every bit of twenty minutes. Only fair, that's, you know, no. Um, as you guys know, the street press coming quick and usually I'm here a lot sooner. Uh, the paperwork that I said, hey, this is a great idea. We should do this and it's good because it will help streamline everything. Was the biggest stress that I had for the fair and also caused me to procrastinate getting it turned in. So we're here tonight. If you don't know, it's September five, six and seven, one hundred thirty seventh year that we're doing it. And again, I'm in charge. Um, not much is changing. Um, well, the rides company is very excited the, with the work that Pam and Dick Schmidt did in their parking lot there. They will be able to maneuver around a lot easier. You should have got the letters in your packet. I don't want to bore you with a lot of details, but be the same as past year's closure, closure of South Main Street. From the park to Railroad Street at twelve noon on Wednesday. That allows both city and the rides company to be able to work and get things started, to get things in place. Without the threat of getting run over because it is a very, very busy road. The sign, I've already brought it in for, to be hung on North Main, which I think will be next week. And then also to hold the fireman's parade Thursday evening, September fifth. At six fifteen, six thirty P M. Step off somewhere in that neighborhood, uh, again. And as always, we thank the city for their cooperation in our little soiree that we hold here in Columbia that we very much look forward to. And that's a week that I know that Friday night, there's a home game. So the park will be utilized. So parking will be at a premium in our fine city. Any questions?
Uh, I'm not sure. Do we already give those dates away and?
Have we got something else for Main Street?
Wouldn't surprise me. There's a lot going on.
Yeah, really.
I just want to say it's a phenomenal thing that you people do and have done for what, one hundred thirty one years? I miss some of those. Um, and uh, but uh, Jake, Jake, we really appreciate your work too. Another good example of why Columbia is so successful to having people like you. Take a real major role in making this happen.
Yeah, I, I did notice Lance that the, the two lights at brand in Main Street have, are working again.
Oh, okay.
I saw that and I was very grateful because everybody like it's a very dark spot and this would have been. So that's not, I'm very excited.
Okay, we, okay.
Actually, this one is not a later item.
No, this is a good one.
I, I think Jake's made long enough. We can probably go and vote on it now.
Yep. My wife will appreciate it.
Um, I'll move to approve as requested, uh, with one exception, I want to give Lance the authority to make any changes to the timing. If something comes up last minute, like if you need to close a little bit earlier, the street or something. Well, Lance will have the authority to go ahead and make those decisions without referring it to us.
Yeah, and also the tent company, the tent will be down on Saturday night. So the street, everything should be as usual for.
The second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion.
A second.
Second, second on.
Sorry. Um, and then also on that page two, you'll see the closure list. Just kind of breaks it all down if you have, uh, for the newer members.
And I'll, I'll just note for the record, the letter did request waiving of the sign fee and waiving of the. The food truck fees as well. So that's all included in that motion already.
Is that okay with you, John?
Yeah.
Okay, with that, about the motion. Any other comments, discussion on the motion? Do you have any color roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Appreciate it. Next we have Michelle Brown, city resident to discuss renaming the witch walk event. Michelle?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Um, I want to thank all of you guys for hearing me today.
Can you speak up, ma'am?
Yes.
As we're trying to, we record this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so what um, I wanted to discuss today was um, having a fall harvest festival. Instead of the witch walk. Like we've all been talking about, we, we, a lot of us have been born here, raised here and. Uh, just know that our community is conservative and is based on traditional. We have traditional values, family values. And um, I never thought about it when I was talking with Lance. He was saying how we, we have like a church on every corner. And um, one of the things he was sharing with me was that um, all of the nonprofits. And I didn't even know this, but all of the nonprofits, I think he said, except for one, are from um, Christian, Christian. You know, based centers and things like that, but um. As you know, we were voted the nicest place in America. And so what brought this, I was sitting in a waiting room and I saw this Reader's Digest on the uh, table down below. And then uh, I was just going through on my cell phone and I looked at the little um, video that they had. You know, at that time. And one of the things that was stated was that this is a town that people want to raise their kids at. And um, so I was just kind of like thinking, is this? Is this witch walk, you know, versus like a harvest celebration or something like that? Something that I would want to, I guess, be known for or just to be passed down to generations. Cause it's just always been a time of celebrating the fall and, and harvesting things. And you know, I didn't even know that we ha, were having a witch walk until I drove down Main Street and I saw the banner hanging. So at that, at that point, I was just blindsided. And then I know that the event occurred. And um, to my understanding, it was because you guys were presented uh, by the people that wanted the witch walk. Saying that it was going to be a good um, you know, a rev, could, to generate revenue for the town. It would bring in a lot of people and things like that. And I asked Lance if we really generated that much more income on that day by turning it from something traditional like a harvest. Or a fall celebration to a, a witch walk, if it really brought in like that, that much, that much more people. And he said, he, you don't have the numbers right now, but you'll find out if, if we really had that much more than we would have. If it was like a fall harvest celebration or something like that. But um, I just, I was just asking myself, is this something that I want my town to be known for? Is a witch walk versus um, a harvest time and celebration? And I just couldn't have a piece about sitting and saying, yeah, that's something that I, I feel is good for Columbia or representation of. Our town, Columbia. It just, I don't have a piece about it and. I was wanting to see if we could get the witch walk turned back into like a harvest celebration. And keep it focused on what it has been focused on for a lot of years.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Um, any questions, comments?
Well, I don't think the council made a decision on what it was. It was approached to us by Chamber of Commerce. And that was their plan. So, and I'm sure, I don't know if they've come to us, but have they come to us again for this same?
Yeah.
Yes.
So maybe go to the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, when Lance called me, he's, he said it was the Chamber of Commerce. And I said, they have the authority to make the decision on what happens in our town. They decided to put the witch walk here. And he said, well, they approached us, but the final decision was made by the city council. Which is why I said, okay, well then I would like to go ahead and speak with the members of the city council. And I shared with him, I feel like, I said, I don't feel like I'm like a minority. I said, I feel like the majority of our town really, if ever, had an opportunity, you know, to, to share. If, if they rather keep it more the fall harvest versus a witch walk. And um, so I have a few people here that kind of feel the same one, same way. That we would just like to see that rich heritage and tradition, tradition, conservative tradition stay with Columbia instead of a witch walk.
Just trying to clarify real quick, um, as, as far as I'm aware, last year was the first year of this witch walk. And I'm not aware of any fall festival or something that changed the name, unless I'm wrong. Is anyone?
That was in.
So I don't think there was anything that they changed the name of. This was the first year they did it last year. And we had two people show up and protest to the name.
Well, you know what, we would, there would have been.
Into account, you know, but um.
There would have been more, but we were, I was just blindsided when I saw the banner hanging over the town. And I really was disheartened by it.
Well, I, I mean, I personally didn't attend, but I know several members did. And there were a lot of families there and there was certainly nothing, um, I don't know, negative. That was to be portrayed. As a result, it was a family friendly activity from what I'm told. And so I, there was not this, um, it, I mean, if, if that's, if I'm, like I said, I wasn't there. Um, but there certainly was not an event that was changed to change the name to the witch walk. There was not a prior fall harvest festival that I'm aware of. That's what I'm saying. Yes. But you, she keeps referring to this fall festival and I'm not aware that it ever happened.
We could rename the, the witch walk.
I have no problem with, but you know, it, we did not name it that. They asked for permission.
Well, the witch walk people approached um, one of the, I think she's here. I didn't even know about this. That um, does like the gourds and things like that, but she just didn't want to um, put up her tent because it is a witch walk per se. But um, you know, if we could just. But, um, you know, if we could just. Preserve, just preserve what Columbiana I feel represents, which is traditional and conservative versus, cause like a witch, that's a far cry from. And fall, there's so many things to celebrate, like just having to have it called a witch walk.
You're proposing the chamber changes the name.
Yes, I don't, I don't have it with me, but, um, I had it on one of the flyers I made, had the definition of a witch and it. It's, um, a woman that, okay, a woman who is believed to practice black magic often with the aid of a devil. And it just. It just doesn't, um, it just, I don't feel like it fits the, the bill of our, of our town.
When you, when you.
You have to come up.
While she's coming up, when you, when you talk about, uh, council, we. We vote on all the activities in the town, that it's from a safety standpoint, uh, and things like that. Uh, what they name it, as long as it's not a safety issue, then, you know, it's okay. So, it really is a chamber. Well, but it really, but it really is a chamber, it really is a chamber thing, that they came up with it.
State your name, ma'am, please.
I'm Debbie May, I live here in Columbiana. I've moved back here nine, nine years ago because I felt safe up here. Coming from East Liverpool, you see a whole lot of things, drugs went rampant and people went crazy. And towards East Liverpool area on the outskirts and Slainsville. It started out simple as witch walks, witch parties. But what it escalated into in Slainsville, and I can take you there if you would love to see it. It's on a back road where they now meet, there's stars that's burnt into the ground. And there's animals that hang from the trees with their throats slit and their guts slit. This is what it has evolved into. So you touch a little bit of this stuff and eventually it magnitudes into something else. And will you be able to stop it when it magnitudes into something else? In Slainsville, the cops won't even go on that road at nighttime when all this is taking place right now. And in East Liverpool, I know ones that's gone to these witch parties and they've gotten high. And they've got, done things that they shouldn't do. They initiate, they call it, you wanna be a witch, you initiate. You go and you do damage to somebody's home, you go and do damage to somebody else. You know, we had two boys from, from Leetony, Ohio, and they had to belong to a group. And I don't know if you remember that, they were from Franklin Square Road. And they had to initiate, what they did was they killed a man, they almost beheaded his daughter in the backyard, and this was on Franklin Square Road. Do we stop it before it starts, or do we continue on? I say stop it, you know, we let the drugs come in. And now on the news, the other day I heard of this child that got into the gummy and overdosed and had to be taken to the hospital. We let that come in, and where has it gone, gotten to now? And we're gonna hear a lot more of this. I'm a gourd storyteller. I love decorating gourds and doing these things, and I have been approached about the witches walk to come and do my gourd storytelling. And I can't conscientiously, I won't do it, because I don't want anything to do with it. I know where that kinda stuff leads, and it's not a good road. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sylvia Jera. I've only lived in Columbiana six years, and it's a nice town. I feel safe, I almost feel like back home, I could leave the doors and windows open, I felt really safe. But this is just my personal conviction, and I'm not trying to evangelize you. But I want you to think about what you're going to hear. In Deuteronomy eighteen, it says, no witchcraft, no sorcery, no black language, black magic. And that's the word of God. And then it's repeated again in Revelation twenty-one, basically the same thing. No witchcraft, no sorcery, no black magic or whatever. Wow, wouldn't it be wonderful, we could honor God? Not the pocketbooks. Honor God, that's all, just to honor God, thank you.
Ma'am, I didn't catch your name. Sylvia? Sylvia?
Anybody else wanna say anything?
Yeah, I do wanna add that there are actually three.
Ma'am, please give.
Oh, I'm sorry, Danielle Garner. I'm also a resident, and I wanna add that there are actually three definitions to witchcraft, there's probably more. Because as you know, we all have dictionaries, thesauruses, we all have different versions of encyclopedias, correct? So we all know that there are multiple definitions to everything these days. Um, but particularly witchcraft covers three definitions. It's of the spiritual cult, it can be also known as an arch type. And it can be also known as powerful femininity rooted in the earth. So there are actually three separate definitions. Um, and I just wanna say, as a young child, I was really banned from celebrating Halloween and anything to do with Halloween. I grew up in a very conservative, traditional family. Not to say that that did not hide the abuse behind those closed doors. However, I attended plenty of church-based fall festivals. I think we all know, I think it's been said earlier in this mar- this meeting, that there are churches on every single corner of Columbiana. I've been running the streets of Columbiana. Um, and on my runs, I see every single church that is posted at every single corner. And as beautiful as they are, and as much as I respect your values and your beliefs and your guide, you are absolutely allowed to have that. But I know my friend enjoyed the festival last year, I enjoyed the festival last year. I enjoyed as an adult that can make my own decisions. That I could go to a Halloween-based event and dress up as a witch and enjoy it. And no, I didn't dress up because I didn't have money to dress up at the time, but I really authentically enjoyed it. Um, so just as you have the right to practice your faith, I have the right to not practice your faith. And I think you need to be respectful of that, um. So, yeah, I think that that's right now is the point of what I wanna say. Um, also, to the woman who came up and was. I'm not sure how true it is, I'm not sure what the place is, I haven't heard of the place, it sounds more like nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties rooted. Your witchcraft to me, the satanic phobia or the satanic panic to me. Um, however, she pointed out. That there were animal sacrifi- sacrifices and that there were initiations. I also wanna point out biblically. That your deity literally killed a whole human on a cross. And to initiate in many of your churches. You are required to drink grape juice, which signifies.
Okay. So, um. I just wanna say, I, first of all, I appreciate. Well.
No, I'm Charlie, I'm part of Columbiana since nineteen seventy-nine, all my kids went to school here, graduated here. You know, we've heard a lot of history stories about Columbiana tonight. And, um, the town is known as a conservative town, we do have churches on every corner. And everyone in town, as far as I know, is free to practice whatever faith, belief they have or don't have. But that's not really what's being discussed tonight. Uh, I have a question for each of you council members, do you believe that there is such a thing as evil? That there is such a thing as a, a, a real devil?
Okay, wait a second. We're a public body, no, no, that's, don't ask that question.
Okay, I won't ask that question.
That's not fair to ask.
When did it become, uh, a family event? And something that we would encourage to wanna bring our children to? Is something that dabbles in this kind of thing? So I won't, I won't get into talking about it specifically, but, but when did that become something that's quote-unquote a fun family event? When we all know, if you would, if you would ask yourself seriously the question. That anything that has to do with witches, witchcraft. Is, is all finds its roots in evil things or darkness and things that aren't good. So my question is, what, when did that become something that we decided is a good thing for our children? And just because we call it a family-friendly event doesn't change what it really is. Someone just mentioned about the churches that look real nice on the outside, but there's something else happening inside. Or families that look nice on the outside, but there's something else happening. Well, you know, the same thing happens with this sort of thing. You present it as a family-friendly event and bring all our children to, and eventually the, the long-range goal for this, in my opinion. Is that we normalize this sort of thing in, in our community and with our children, and pretty soon it's, it's just an accepted part of life. When did that become a good thing that we teach our family, that we teach our children, our grandchildren? When did we decide that that sort of thing is what our community needs to flourish and our community needs to, to have fun? For lack of a better way to say that. I, I'm not of the opinion that, that we rename the same event and do the same things, but just call it something different. That, that's, that's not the direction to go. Now, I, I get that you didn't put this on as a council. But you were presented with someone's request to allow this in the city, and you all voted for it and approved it. So you've given your stamp of approval to whatever goes on at that event, yes or no? Is that a fair statement for everyone? You have. If you voted yes, to say, yeah, this is something we wanna see happen, you've given your approval to whatever goes on with it.
For the street closure, we can't control what people do.
Not asking you to.
Control people's actions.
Said whatever goes on, John.
A prevent, a, a. A potential.
People's actions.
Didn't ask you to.
Well, you're saying we're proving anything that happens there.
You were presented with an event that had a particular name. That also has a particular, um. A stigma, but it has an, an, an agenda, it's not events.
So are you saying you're completely opposed to the event happening, because you said if we cha- if they change the name?
You change the name and do the same things, then you haven't done anything.
So I mean.
Except cover it up.
You know, I mean, I thought the request was to ask chamber to change it.
What I'm saying is, is that it should not be. Something we say is a family-friendly thing to bring into our community and teach our children and grandchildren and say, well, it's just about having fun. There are lots of ways to have fun. We all know that, and none of us wishes bad on our, our children, our grandchildren, I know that, none of you wish that, that bad things happen. But as parents, grandparents, community members, there's a responsibility and an obligation to try and. Hold those things back, not invite them in and, and attempt to normalize them. Whether you realize you're doing that or not, you're normalizing that sort of activity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that, um, when the witch walk was proposed to this council. Um, myself and other council members did ask the Chamber of Commerce if they would consider changing the name. Now, they presented logistical reasons for keeping it as such, but because there were no safety issues, as Councilman Liston pointed out earlier, and there were no. Significant barriers to the event taking place that would preclude us stepping in and telling them no. We approve the event. And in my mind, I see this as being a perfectly appropriate time to approach the Chamber of Commerce about changing the event. There are many people in the city, number of young families as well. Who've made it clear to me that they're not taking their children to this event, in large part because of many of your concerns, and I sympathize with a lot of them. But again, this council did ask the Chamber of Commerce to reconsider changing that name. Councilman Yengus, I believe, um, brought up the first concern and we addressed that, and in light of their reasons. Largely because they didn't present any other safety concerns, this council approved the event. I think that's important to, uh, highlight.
And I understand the difficult position that you're in if there are no issues.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I wanna add to that, um, first off, I really, I sincerely appreciate everyone coming in, um.
Yeah.
It is, it is great to, to get this kinda community involvement. It's, it really is something that, you, you know, we, we see it on Facebook and then noth- no one ever comes in to actually talk to us about it. Uh, so I do appreciate everyone coming in, I think it's, it's tremendous that you're all here. Uh, what it really comes down to for me is, as long as they're not doing anything unlawful, we can't really censor content. So if they come to us and say we wanna do an event. Unfortunately, it can be whatever it is, as long as there's nothing unlawful going on, our, our hands are kinda tied as to what we can tell them. So, um, I mean, there are certain events I would vote against, just because I would, I mean, I. Could give you a number of examples, I would say, no, you're, I would, I would vote against that and I'll take the lawsuit. Um, this is one where I attended last year. You know, I didn't see any witchcraft or anything else, it was a fall festival, they just, they did the witch thing as, as a Halloween-type tie-in. But I, for me, it really comes down to, again, if they're not, if they're not breaking the law, then we can't really censor their content. And if they are breaking the law, I promise that the chief will take care of that quickly. If they're breaking the law, I mean, if there's a law being broken, if there's an annual sacrifice, if it were to get that extreme. If there's unopened fire on, on Main Street, that would be illegal, right? So there, un- unless they're cooking with it. Chief, you can correct me on this if you, if I'm wrong, but, um, there would, there are certainly, you know. If they're doing something illegal, believe me, that our police will not allow them to continue. And there are police there, just like any other event on Main Street, there will be police there. Be, well, we can't, because it's not our event and we can't censor content.
Can someone from Zoom speak?
It's scheduled.
So I mean, I, I mean, I'd say that the chamber is who you need to be addressing, you know, in, in order to change the name, it would be the chamber, you know, to do that.
So you all throw up at the chamber meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the chamber meeting would be the appropriate venue, and then we all now have these concerns to, to consider if this ever comes up again. So, we didn't have these, like I said, two people showed up, one, one couple last year.
They're here. They're there.
Okay, yeah. So, so yeah, so this is.
You brought reinforcements this year.
Hey, well done.
And then someone had a flyer and saw it again, and I thought, well, I guess this is gonna be our annual thing, a witch walk now. And I just, I didn't wanna see us go down that road.
I, I, I understand it completely, I really do, uh, I mean, these things, I, you know, we, we all hear the stories like, like you, I think it was you right, that it had said. Um, was it, so, we all hear those stories and, believe me. I promise you that our, our chief and our, you know, our safety forces are watching, make sure there's nothing going on that shouldn't be going on.
Hello?
Okay.
Can, can someone from the Zoom speak?
Somebody just.
Yeah, somebody on Zoom. Uh, hit the blue arrow then. Is it Natalie?
Yep, it's Natalie Clutter.
Here, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yep.
So I've lived in Columbiana for, well, Columbiana County for thirty-five years of my life, and. When I was, in twenty twenty-one, when I was deciding what town I wanted to live in, um, Columbiana was at the top of my list because of how nice the area is. And, um, if, if anybody knows the show Gilmore Girls, we are Stars Hollow, we have an event for everything, we always, you know, so. Having a witch walk is just, like honestly, a dime a dozen. I feel like this town does so many different festivals all the time, which is fantastic, I think it's awesome, there's always things here for people to do. for people to do. And, um, one event I don't think is going to send us flying off the rails into Satanism. So, um, if you don't agree with Halloween and if you don't agree with a witch walk, don't let your kids trick or treat. Don't pass out candy. Don't attend this event. But for the Chamber of Commerce, the reason why they put on these events is because they want to generate tourism. They want to generate revenue for these towns, for these businesses to be successful. Nobody wants to open a business in town and have it shuttered six months later because it wasn't successful. So these events help promote these small family owned businesses and just one event's not going to derail the whole thing. Um, I just want to say that I really do enjoy living in Columbiana. I've owned my home here for coming on three years and I can say that is the nicest, cleanest town that in this entire county. And I honestly think that this is just a little silly that this is being brought up whenever we have an event happening almost every other weekend that kids are more than welcome to, um, attend. And I would just encourage all the naysayers to go into Facebook. I don't know where the pictures are. I think they are on the, uh, the chambers, um, Facebook, but take a look at the photos from last week's event. It looked like the best time ever and I'm sad I missed it. And, um, I believe I will be attending this year. Um, asking to change it from witch walk to harvest festival, fall festival would be the same as myself, who is not a churchgoer, not, uh, you know, but I would, it would be me coming to you guys saying, let's rename the joy of Christmas to the joy of the season. It's, you know, do you really want to start that battle? And it's just like kind of picking and choosing your battles. And it's literally just a weekend. And if you are afraid your kids are going to see it, uh, there's plenty of side streets you can, uh, drive past to avoid your kids seeing an event and saying mommy, mommy, daddy, daddy, I want to go. So just kind of think about that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
What's the chamber meeting?
That's true. Do you know?
Either, I believe it's the second Wednesday of the month.
Is it on the, is it on the community calendar?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
It varies where it's at.
Yeah, it's, it's not here, it's here.
It's not here. Yeah, it's not here.
Right.
That's the best thing, Paul Lemon. Thank you all for expressing your opinion.
Absolutely.
You still, okay, you have to come up front here, ma'am. Oh, you can't.
You know what?
Take the mic back there. Bryce is going to take the mic back there.
I'm just a little old Mennonite girl, as you can well see, Sarah, Sarah Weaver. I live in Columbiana and I know we all want to honor God. So let's, let's do things that do honor the Lord God.
Uh, my name is Mike Lick and I live in this city. And, um, and I was doing some studying about this and, um, and just to make a long story short, First Samuel fifteen twenty-three, it says rebellion, rebellion is sinful as witchcraft. And I just want to clarify, um, um, and not only that, its stubbornness is as bad as worshiping idols. So, um, what rebellion has to do with is, um, you're told to do something and you're saying, no, I'm going to do what I want to do. I want to do what I want to do and nobody can tell me what to do. That's, that's rebellion, um, and it's coming against authority. Um, and I just want to clarify what somebody said earlier that, um, somebody hung on the cross, we Christians put somebody on the cross. Let me just clarify who that was. We know who that was, right? It's Jesus Christ. He, um, he was the epitome of obedience. This obedience is the epitome of rebellion and witchcraft. He was the epitome of obedience. He obeyed his father until the point of death, even the death of the cross. I just wanted to clarify that. And he procured our salvation. Everyone that, and, and it says, um, there's no other name under heaven whereby we must be saved. Jesus Christ, he, he's the only name under heaven whereby we must be saved. So I choose to go with that view of becoming obedient unto God. And, and I would appreciate, um, viewing our city uh, as one that obeys God and not as, and not rebellious to God. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh, I want to thank everyone for coming. Uh, we always let people speak at our meetings and, uh, that's very important to all of us up here that we hear everybody speak. We appreciate you coming and, uh, you know, and I think, uh, this is an item, you know, an issue that, you know, we discussed very well. So, um, you know, there are some avenues to take in future years and, you know, we'll have to go through, go through with that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, please, please try to, we need to continue the meeting. So please try to leave as quietly as possible. Okay, we're, we're moving to the manager's report. We're going to have the, our, uh, update by our city manager Lance Willard. Lance?
Hey, thanks, mayor. Just want to point out that we had a public hearing on July sixteenth for the tax budget, but we did not motion to approve the tax budget. So we need to do that. And that's on the agenda tonight. So as under our new, new, uh, new business. Um, want to point out that the mayor has a list of individuals that he would like to, uh, consider for Charter Review Commission. We placed that on the list, corresponding motion on the agenda. Uh, there was a nice article in the paper about that process, uh, where the mayor every five years, uh, is to uh, get, get, um, some residents together and do that. And, uh, those, those listed names are there. Uh, we did have one letter of interest for the park board opening, uh, and we put that on the, uh, agenda also. I do want to, uh, point out that, uh, let's see, yeah, we did have, we, we're still in the process of, um, implementing that new software that we installed. Uh, it is state of the art, uh, software. It's taken over eighteen months to, for us to learn and install, install it. Uh, we just, uh, we, we did have a situation that many of you are aware about, uh, as far as the billing, uh, that it added, uh, basically about twelve days to the month, and we're hoping to get that addressed, uh, this month. But, uh, we appreciate everybody understanding in the public and, um, our workforce that, uh, it's been a, quite a task to, to handle all that. We do hear you, um, you know, we're, we're trying to prevent that from happening, uh, in the future. And we have looked up, um, I know Ty mentioned to me a budget program. We're looking into that with this new state of the art, uh, software. If we'll be able to adopt that down the road, definitely want to do it the next couple of months because we've, we've had a lot, uh, a lot to deal with this, this year in implementing this. But I want to thank Kevin and, and his staff for everything that they were doing. And, and, um, you know, I do, you know, appreciate everybody's patience because, uh, at the end of the day, our, we answer the phone and it's not a recording. And we are human beings. It should be treated that way. So we do appreciate everybody, uh, having the patience. Uh, uh, let's see, Bryce and, uh, the mayor and I went to, uh, Youngstown. They asked us about the designated outdoor refreshment area and how we implemented it. So, uh, we went up there two actually weeks in a row and, um, it was, it was, um, it's a nice experience to, uh, you know, sit down with them and hear our learning curve and, um, kind of give them some, uh, pointers on how we did it. We also took, uh, Josh, um, Dunn from Birdfish, uh, the, the second week. So that was very nice. And you know, I encourage you to, um, you know, Youngstown's trying to, uh, make their downtown, uh, nice and, uh, you know, just watch that for events and such, and maybe you can partake in those and, and, uh, because they are putting a lot of work and, and they do want to do well for, um, Youngstown. We did attend a workshop with, uh, our cap regarding this, uh, our success on, on Main Street. We actually went over to, uh, East Palestine and worked with, um, worked with a group of individuals that, um, are working with our cap and we told our success story, uh, for our downtown. So that was, that was a nice, uh, nice event. Um, most of people were storefront owners or council people. Just kind of learning from us and maybe potentially, uh, um, cross marketing in the future with, with, uh, East Palestine. Uh, to give you some updates on the, uh, some of the projects we've got going on, Duquesne sidewalk uh, is pretty much, uh, complete except for the bridge that we're going to put on the north side of the, uh, Duquesne Street. Uh, they'll just simply, uh, set that there when it's delivered. Fairfield School Road has a base coat and pavement down. And our crews have moved down to Lisbon Street where we're going to go down to the underpass and, uh, fix that, uh, bump, bumpy road. We're also going to be putting, um, some storm water in that area to prevent, uh, um, the road from de, um, deteriorating. Because as Jesse says, you know, show me a bad road and I'll show you bad drainage. So we're going to try to fix the drainage down there. And just as a reminder, both of those projects, the Duquesne sidewalk project, uh, was, was a, a grant that we received from ODOT. And I believe that one was a ninety-five percent grant as well as the Fairfield School Road, uh, and Lisbon Street, that was another ninety-five percent grants. So we really appreciate ODOT working with us. And that's, uh, you know, we do care about our, um, infrastructure. It's important to us and, um, we can fix it right. I know that, uh, for those of you that live along Fairfield School Road, we actually put in a lot of, um, storm water, storm water lines. So that, that'll be nice, uh, for the years to come there. Uh, tonight we have on, um, the agenda, um, we want to go out the bid for the Crestview Raw Waterline Project. It's a reminder for some, in, in the help you with this project, uh, the, the city owns a, uh, a farm outside of town, south of town, about three miles. And we're going to run some water lines, uh, with a, um, a grant that we got through, uh, Water and Grants from the State Department, uh, Department of Development. And we really appreciate them doing that. It was a significant grant that we applied for a few years ago and, and we, um, we need to get that out the bid as soon as possible, get them under con, contract and get, uh, that project going before the end of the year. Uh, the lift, lift station project, another, uh, that's about a three million dollar project that we're working on that we got a million dollar grant uh, from the Congressman Johnson's office for the, uh, state budget, excuse me, federal budget. We have met with all the businesses that are going to be, uh, impacted to kind of give them a schedule. And, um, the, the, the crews are doing pretty well. You've seen, um, some action there near, um, Pizza Hut, that's a new water line that we're extending to the north. And this, this lift station will be allowed, allow us to, um, eventually service two hundred twenty-five more acres in that area. Um, and it should be done probably, hopefully that lift station is up and running. Uh, hopefully, uh, January I would say, and it's going to be replacing or ability to replace about five lift stations that we have out there for aging, uh, equip, equipment. So we're very, uh, we're, we're looking forward to getting, getting, uh, that replaced. And it's a rather large project. So if you're coming down, um, by Lovey's Ice Cream, you're going to see some, um, some, some, uh, orange barrels up there clear up, um, actually clear over to Joshua Dixon. So, um, that's, that's a pretty big project. Okay, right. We have an emergency legislation regarding the signing of an officer to drug task force and, um, let's see, we also have emergency legislation, uh, to put two school resource officers out at Columbia Exempt Village School District. They voted to accept the contract last, uh, Tuesday. And we're going to do the other half tonight. And, um, we need to do it soon because school's in session. So. Um, Drug Mart, uh, will be, uh, opening soon, just to kind of put that on your radar. Not exactly sure what date it'll be, but, uh, probably, um, in the next few weeks, I would think. Electric department, we had the perform locates, uh, disconnected a service for demolition. Um, I think, um, Bryce reported to us that, um, all the burned out houses that we had in the, in the entire city, Bryce, you there, we're, we're all, they're all down. Uh, that's a long, lengthy process. Um, sometimes longer than others, but, uh, we've taken care of all of them to make sure that they're, uh, or actually follow them. We don't, we don't do a lot for all of them. Um, sometimes we, we have to get involved, but, uh, we do, uh, communicate with them to make sure that they're going to do that. Park and Cemetery, we did hire a new, uh, part-time secretary. Uh, so we'll have office hours from nine to three thirty. Um, we did adjust the pool operating hours due to college and high school kids, uh, high school resuming. Um, shortened hours began on the sixteenth. The water department, we had thirty-eight locates and fifteen work orders. We began the valve turning process. We also, I did not announce this, um, the last meeting, did receive a sixteen thousand dollar grant, uh, from the state, the GIS grant, allowing the GIS tie-hander system for quicker locates. So they, uh, they really like the new technology and, uh, it'll, it'll help them, uh, in their, in their jobs. So. We work with, uh, the Firestone HOA. They, we supplied them paint and brushes and they painted, uh, fifty-one hydrants out there, the neighborhood project. Street department, just give you an update on the town cleanup, which, um, you know, over the years has definitely changed, you know, fifteen years ago, it was an event. Everybody in the, everybody would come from all around just to go through, um, you know, the pick out things of, of, uh, the town cleanup. But, um, we've, we've really appreciate the, the workforce, um, in the street department for, uh, making that process efficient. Uh, we did fill eighteen forty-yard cubic dumpsters. Those are the great big ones that you put on the semi. And we did collect a hundred and fifty, um, tires. To, uh, I, I should mention that we, there was a recycling event at the library that we really appreciate, uh, them doing that. We kind of worked with them where they were scheduling that and it really helped, uh, our town cleanup. People took it there, you know, electronics and such, um, and, and didn't, um, you know, put it out at the curb and we can't pick it up. So. Waste water department, um, you have the repair generator and they're also working on a, on a, a backer truck. Um, and also monitoring the lakefront, um, lift station project. That's everything I have there.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Appreciate it. Um, I would like to announce at this point, we do have the mayor, mayor's court report for July twenty twenty-four. Did you all receive that? Any questions on that? And next you also received a copy of the bill list from eight, six, twenty twenty-four and eight, twenty twenty-four. Any questions on the bill list? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to all business. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions by title only.
So move.
Second.
In a second. The AM call roll? Motion second. The AM call roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-four dash R dash six five three, second reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them. Through the county auditor.
So move.
Second.
Motion a second. Questions on the motion? DM, you call the roll?
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-four dash R dash six five four, second reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies. And certifying them to the county auditor.
So move.
Second.
Motion a second. DM, you call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three two five two, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager with the assistance of the director of finance. To engage in competitive bidding for the provision of debt collection services for the city of Columbiana. Or in the alternative to enter into contract with selected by the city manager. With the assistance of the director of finance for the provision of debt collection services for the city of Columbiana. When the total amount to be collected pursuant to such contracts will not exceed the amounts as set forth. In Ohio Revised Code nine point one seven.
Don't move.
Second. Motion a second. DM, you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three two five three, second reading. An ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract. With Mike's Tree and Landscape LLC, eight hundred West Baton Street, Alliance, Ohio, four four six oh one. For the furnishing of tree pruning for the city of Columbiana.
No moves. Second.
Motion a second. Questions on the motion? DM, you call the roll?
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three two five four, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mike's Tree and Landscape LLC. Eight hundred West Baton Street, Alliance, Ohio, four four six oh one for the furnishing of tree removal. And stump grinding for the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. DM, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three two five five, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager with the assistance of the director of finance. To adopt a policy and procedure to determine the collectibility of debt owed to the various departments of the city. And to write off those debts determined to be uncollectible.
So move. Second.
DM, you call the roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
New business. First item on the new business side, uh, I'm seeking a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five tax budget.
Yes.
Second.
That was different.
Yeah.
Get out of the way.
Yeah.
It's certainly the motion a second. Any questions or comments on that motion? DM, you call the roll?
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Before I read the next motion, I just wanna comment very briefly that, um, as Lance mentioned. Uh, every five years, the, in accordance with our charter, uh, we must do a review of that charter. And I must appoint, I recommend appointment of a committee to do that review. Uh, Columbiana started the, the charter in nineteen seventy-one and, um. That way, and it was, they started, they started the process. It ended up, didn't get passed till nineteen seventy-four. Which is coming up on fifty years. So we have a charter form of government. And, uh, I think the results are tremendous as to how the city has grown and progressed under that form of government. And I credit those people who took the time to restructure with, uh. East Palestine and Columbiana are the only two con- communities in Columbiana County that have a charter form of government. And I think it's worked very well. My second statement is that. This group that's stepped forward to serve on the Charter Commission. I think this is just phenomenal and we are so lucky in this community that people wanna put time into, to helping out. We ask for people to step forward to be on the Charter Commission. Dan Blaisdale was our fo- former municipal attorney. Uh, Keith Chamberlain was our former city manager prior to Lance. Mary Louise Dickens was the finance director. And Dick McBain, Richard McBain was former city councilman. And Don Pettisini is the adult services manager at the Columbiana Library. I think this is a good group. We will be, um, organizing this group once you folks approve this, this group. And, uh, we'll start working, we'll hold public meetings so people can find out about it. But, um, I'm a huge proponent of the charter form of government. I think it's really important and it's really been great that we've had that. Um, so, at that point, I would seek a motion to concur with the mayor's appointments to the Charter Review Commission.
So move.
Second.
Motion a second. Any questions or comments?
I've got, I've got to agree with you. This is, this is a phenomenal group of people. They'll do a great job.
Um, I just wonder if anyone could walk us through how this process is gonna work? Like, I mean, what are the steps? We, we formed the, the committee and then what happens next?
Well, I will convene the Charter Commission review, a review committee. Will utilize the newspapers and various sources to, uh, announce when we will hold public meetings to discuss the charter. We will make sure that all of them get an opportunity to hear public comments on any changes or alterations to the charter. Recommended changes and then, um, the charter members can make recommendations if they wish. And we'll discuss those, those changes. And, uh, basically what's interesting is that if the Charter Commission. Uh, does make a recommendation for change, then it has to, those change, change recommendations would come back to the council. And this council would vote on whether to put that charter change on the ballot. And then the public would get to vote on making any changes to the charter. So it's, it is a long and bold process, but I think it's a necessary process, a good process. And, um, I'm looking forward to seeing that carried forward. Any other questions? Okay, good. Dan?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
I am now, uh, I am seeking a motion to appoint a member to the Park Recreation Cemetery Board, open seat. Unexpired term ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six. Uh, the only official request we got to serve on that board was Terry Schaefer.
I'll move to nominate Terry Schaefer for the position of park board.
Do we get a second there?
I just, I wish Terry were here today because I'd really wanna ask him, dude, you got out. What are you doing coming down?
Yeah, Terry was the former Park Recreation and Cemetery Board's, uh, superintendent. And he retired a couple of years ago.
He didn't realize how much he loved us.
Loves the park. Okay, we have a motion and second, the AM call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Um. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve the request from Marty Knowles to reschedule the North Elm Street Block Party Event. Which was previously approved by City Council on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting to September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Due to the weather forecast. Everything will remain the same for the event as previously approved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. DM, you call the roll?
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
The next three, two resolutions and an ordinance are being presented as emergency. I would like to entertain a motion to consider the following resolutions and ordinance as an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Motion a second. DM, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-four dash R dash six five five, emergency. An emergency resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU. To accept monies from the Columbiana Exempt Village School District to be used exclusively for the wages and related benefits to permit. The city of Columbiana Police Department to assign two school resource officers, SRO, at the district schools.
So move.
So move.
Second.
If we got a motion a second? DM, you call the roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-four dash Charlie six five six, emergency. An emergency resolution accepting monies from the Columbiana County Board of Commissioners. To be used exclusively for wages and related benefits. To permit the city of Columbiana Police Department to assign an officer to the Columbiana County Drug Force.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion a second. Question, DM, you call the roll?
Listen?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three two five six, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to advertise for bids for the purpose of entering into a contract. For the furnishing of the necessary construction materials, equipment and labor. For the Crestview Road slash Fairfield School Road Raw Waterline Project for the city of Columbiana.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion a second. DM, you call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Okay, that ends new business. Um. I'm under the assumption we will not be taking any action. Okay, normally our procedure is for the sake of you folks and your time. Um, when we have executive session items, we usually restructure our agenda so that. We give, uh, the public comment section of our agenda now instead of at the end of the meeting. So I'm going to entertain any thing I'm most proud of at Columbianas. We always are open to public comment. We believe in it, believe in it very firmly. So at this point, this is your chance to speak. Anybody wants to say anything? Yes.
I'm really sorry. I've never been to one of these and I didn't know how aggressive you had to be to get to the mic. I raised my hand twice. The mic ended up going back there. So please, may I bring up a past discussion? Okay, okay, um. I did not go to the, the last year's.
It, it's easy.
I didn't go, but I did read some things that said, and I heard some stories. That there were witches' brews and potions and that nature of things. First of all, I wanna say I appreciate Columbiana and I appreciate all of what you do. You do a great job and I don't come to these because I trust what you do. Um, but anyways. This is not Casper the Friendly Ghost. We've all watched him as a cartoon. This is not Casper the Friendly Ghost. And I think in our heart of hearts and our conscience, we know. And it has kind of been said where evil can lead to. We know what is evil. And it's not good. It never leads to good. And. The spirit that is behind this witch walk stuff is evil. Please get that. If you can't. If you can't tell them what they can or can't do, I think you have the power to ban it altogether. And with the other, um, who, who are they, the chamber? I'm just asking that you will go with your heart of hearts. Evil is never good. And this is an evil spirit. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Did you need her name?
I'm Patty Chardy.
Okay, good. Any other public comments? Any council comments?
Yes, uh, John and I were approached, uh, last week. With a request to put additional speed limit signs in the park. There is one speed limit sign. And, uh, I rode through the park and I validated there is only one there. So. Uh, the request was to put some additional signs, speed limit signs in the park.
Okay, I'll talk to Jesse. Do you recall what the speed limit is in the park?
Thirteen.
Thirteen mile an hour.
Thirteen mile an hour.
A witch can walk that fast.
Okay, any other comments up here?
I just have one for you, Lance. We asked them to not put that in the CYB. Oh, sure. The crew's using our, the baseball dumpsters for the. For their dumpster.
Okay, okay. All right, any other comments?
Um, I did have a question actually, and it's more for the chief, I think. Um, the electric charging stations. Is there, are you able to write tickets for people who like regular, a regular car parked there? Oh, no, the same. A regular car parked there? Yeah, like, uh, an internal combustion engine vehicle parked in one of those spots. Yeah, like, uh, an internal combustion engine vehicle parked in one of those spots.
I'm surprised, we've never had any complaints if that's happened.
I have a picture of one.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay, did you, did you photoshop it?
No. Danny was there with me. She saw me taking a picture. Okay, I just wasn't sure if there was a, if we had the option of writing tickets for that or if the.
I'm not so sure that it's a parking violation. That's a problem.
Yeah, it doesn't say you cannot park a.
It says electric vehicle.
Only?
Only, but it's a green sign, not a red one.
Yes. I mean, I think we'd need to look into it.
And can we look into that? Is it, it is, it's, I mean, it was one car, two, two charging stations. So it wasn't like it was blocking it up for someone to use it. But it is a phenomenon called icing, where you'll park an internal combustion engine. That's what ice. You park an internal combustion engine vehicle in front of a charging station like that so that an electric vehicle can't use it. It's childish and ridiculous, but apparently someone in Columbiana, or somebody who was visiting that day, I think it was at, uh, I think it was Christmas in July, um, was visiting that. Parked their Jeep in that state. And I, I know that they were icing. It was intentional because there was nobody parked within a mile of that, not in, no one else in the entire, you know, AAA parking lot. So. So you want to look into that.
Michigan plates or something.
I have their plates. In the picture, but, um, yeah. Yeah, they were definitely Michigan plates. Cause, well, we'll go with that. Um, and I think they had the M logo on the back window too. So anyway, I just wanted to ask if, if that was an option, if we needed to maybe consider writing something. That's it.
Mark, do I need to do these executive sessions into separate motions?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, thanks for all your comments. Uh, at this point, I'm going to entertain a motion. We're going to executive session, discussion of personnel, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G one to consider the compensation of certain employees.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second. The AM, you call the roll.
Banner.
Yes.
Yengus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTilio.
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of purchase of property. Section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G two, for public purposes. A premature disclosure of information would give an unfair, competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. The AM, you call the roll.
Yengus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTilio.
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending litigation. Section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G three, conference with attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending court action.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. The AM, you call the roll.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTilio.
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Yengus.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Going to executive session now. Entertain a motion to come out of the executive session for discussion of personnel, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G one. You consider the compensation of certain public employees.
So moved. Second.
Second, the AM, you call, hold the roll.
DeTilio.
Yes.
Listen.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Yengus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
I would come out, I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session for the person, for the purpose of discussion of purchase of property, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G two, for public purposes. A premature disclosure of information will give an unfair, competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interests is adverse to the general public interest.
So moved.
Second.
The AM, you call the roll.
Listen.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Yengus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTilio.
Yes.
Entertain a motion to come out of executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending litigation. Section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G three, conference with attorney for pub, for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending court action.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's in seconds. Motion second. Uh, the AM, you call the roll.
Graham.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
Yengus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTilio.
Yes.